Okay, it's 5:00. Let's start the meeting. Yeah. Okay, first of all, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Gerald Nguyen. Long time contributor to Town of Littleton. He passed away on Sunday. Take a moment of silence now. Okay, and we'll open it up with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flyer, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll start the meeting tonight, the NCIC. So, on January 10th, it'll be 5:02, public hearing was opened, and we're going to ask Karen Garrity from Northern Community Investment Corporation to introduce a project. And there are handouts, if anybody's interested, at Vicki's table over here. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. This project, we're applying for the Town of Littleton for a community development block grant. And the general overview of the CDBG as it's known is that these funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available for economic development projects, up to $500,000, excuse me, yes, for, for, sorry, for public facilities, up to $500,000 for housing projects, and up to $500,000 for emergency activities. Up to $25,000 is available for planning. Municipalities are eligible to apply for micro enterprise assistance grants without having it count against the town's cap for any other CDBG projects. All projects must directly benefit a majority of low and moderate income persons. So the general overview of this project is that this proposed grant application to the CDBG Finance Authority is for a grant up to $500,000 in implementation funds to support infrastructure updates related to the Littleton Main Street Phase II project. A minimum of a one-to-one match is required. The funds will be used in conjunction with town-approved and/or other grant funds to complete the Main Street Phase II project. This project conforms with the Town of Littleton's approved housing and community development goals, most notably, one, encouraging growth in commercial and industrial sectors; two, promote adequate social services for residents; and three, seek to strengthen employment opportunities by supporting job retention and creation efforts. So are there questions or comments from the public regarding the overview of the funds and the project?
Okay, seems there's no question. Need a motion to close the public hearing part of this?
For the project portion of the CDBG?
Yeah, for the portion of the block grant hearing.
I got a question. Which one of these do you have asking for?
Which grant are we asking for?
Yeah, I mean, you read a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, it's a $500,000 economic development implementation grant for the Main Street Phase II part of the project.
Phase II is going from the diner to the vehicles.
Yeah.
All of the stuff, fixing the, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the garbage you read into it doesn't apply.
No.
In that area.
But we're required, by the nature of the grant, we're required to make the information public to you.
There's a script the government requires, Bruce, and that's what we're following. Okay.
Bruce, I may be wrong, but I think it runs down to Bridge Street. I think it goes down the hill.
It might go down the right forward.
Right. Okay, so do I get a motion?
Huh?
Need a motion.
Oh, I so move.
All right, I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, um, we got a second hearing?
Second hearing.
Yeah. Second public hearing, residential displacement and relocation assistance plan.
Need a motion.
So I need a motion?
For opening a second?
Opening that one?
I'll move.
Okay, and I'll second. So the public hearing is open, residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan. So Karen, do you want to take over from there?
Will certainly thank you. The residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan outlines measures under the Uniform Relocation Act required for CDBG projects that involve any displacement or relocation of persons or businesses. If the county were to undertake a CDBG project which involved displacement or relocation, they would follow this plan. The plan outlines the measures they would take to find comparable, suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated. For this project, no displacement or relocation is anticipated, but the plan must be adopted in the unlikely event that displacement takes place. Are there questions about this portion? And there are copies of the Town of Littleton's anti-displacement and relocation plan on the table.
Move the first time.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, so no questions?
Make a motion to close.
You make a motion to close, and I'll second it. All those in favor? All right. I guess we're all s--
Okay. We close that now. The first one is, need a motion to approve the submittal of the CBD application.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the submittal of the CDBG application.
Do we do all three at one time here?
Each one separate.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that, and then we make a motion to adopt the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for the project.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Uh, I'll second.
Now, looking for a motion to authorize town manager--
Was that 2-0?
Two, uh, 2-0, yes. Authorize the town manager of Littleton to submit the applications, sign the executive-- and execute, any, all documents necessary.
To effectuate?
To effectuate the potential CBD BG contract.
Second it.
So that's all we need, is signatures.
Is that 2-0?
It's 2-0.
Okay. Just a motion to close. Motion to close.
Make a motion to close this part of it.
Second.
2-0?
2-0.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Go get started on it.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thanks again. Okay, so next, what we're looking for is appointments for the Amnesiac River Local Advisory Committee, and we put out some information and have not got anything back from them. So we're going to table that for now until we get some, some information back.
A motion to table?
Motion to table.
Milk, and then you second, Roger?
Oh, I second.
Okay. 2-0?
2-0.
All right.
So we're looking for the approval for the minutes of the meetings. Can we group these into one, or can we--
Well, you can do it individually. So I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting of December 13th.
December 13th. Okay, I'll second it.
2-0?
2-0.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we--
That was, so there was the two meetings on the 13th.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that we accept the second, minutes of the second meeting on 13th of December.
I'll second that. 2-0. The non-public session minutes for 12:15, 21, I didn't see any problem, we'll accept that.
Make a motion to approve the non-public meetings of December 15, 2021.
Okay, I'll second that.
2-0.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 22nd, the non-public minutes of December 22nd, 2021.
I'll second that. 2-0. 12:27?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of 12:27, 21.
Yep, and I'll second that. The encumbrance work session minutes on the 29th. Make a motion, we accept that. 12:29, 21?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Big coverage.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was, yeah, I'll second that.
2-0?
Okay.
Accept all the minutes. Okay.
Chairman Emerson, we had been advised we were having a presentation by Littleton Water and Light, and what they did is provided staff today a copy of their proposed 2022 budget. The only action you have to take is just approve a motion to accept.
Again, if we haven't read something, so what we can do is simply include these in the, in the minutes of the meeting.
That, that's all it needs to be, is that the fact? Yeah, you're not approving the budget or anything, just that they were received here at the meeting.
They were received, we're just accepting the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I would make that motion.
And I'll second that.
2-0?
2-0. Town officials' updates?
The only verbal update I've got is that we did get advised that the screw pumps are on about a four to six week delay on delivery, but the diesel pump, the electric pump, and everything in the construction we've done down there will still cover us, and, and so that's our stopgap.
Backup?
Yeah, it'll get us through to that process. That's the only update I've got from there.
Okay. So other than that, on to old business.
There's nothing from old business.
Not that I--
No.
Nothing on the old business, right?
No, no old business.
Okay, new business? Fire department?
Chief, just give it.
Yep. I didn't know if you were going to say anything else. I followed it. So before you, you have the, I don't quote, I quote from the local metro corporation, and part of the ARPA funds that we received can go towards the direct care and treatment of COVID patients in response to the pandemic. Recently, over the last couple of months, of the increase in the amount of COVID cases we've had in town, we've seen a significant increase in the amount of patients that we're treating and transporting. One of the, obviously, with COVID, it's a respiratory illness, and these ventilators offer support not only for the COVID patients, but for heart attack victims, COPD and congestive heart failure patients, and other respiratory illness with asthma. So we're putting forth, we're hoping to be able to purchase the two ventilators, one for each, and also just assist with the care of patients that are critically ill with respiratory illness. ARPA money will pay for the entire outfit for us to have, and there's no cost to the town with that. So that's the recommendation that I'm making with the proposal that I have to approve.
Are you looking for a motion to approve this, or?
Yes.
I have a question on the second page, which has to do with the number of items, different kinds of items. Number six is a PM only. Can you tell me, or tell us what that is?
That's preventive maintenance. For the next four years, they'll come into, basically, the service machines kind of put the diagnostic tools on it, make any repairs to it that are needed, and that's, again, that's at no cost to us, that's for the next four years. So actually, technically, it'll cover five years, with the first year being the year that we buy it.
Okay, thank you. So-- Make a motion to approve?
All right, we have a motion on the floor, approve. And I'll second.
Okay. 2-0?
2-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, fire department, again, we're back to sealed bids for Engine Six. We only have one bid on it.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to update you on that truck. I, I have stripped just about everything I possibly can off that truck that I can use. I took the fender, the wheel wells off, the truck, the fender flares, all kinds of valves off the pump, any lighting that was on that truck whatsoever, any equipment on this truck that I could use for any other trucks are sitting in the Conex trailer and stuff. We stripped that truck, so there's basically nothing else left of that truck that we could use off of it. We took some wiring harnesses off of it as well that we can use on the other outrests. The difference between this one and the last one that we got rid of is a lot of the, the pump that's on this truck, we can use with the other pumps that we have on the truck. The other one was a separate, it was a different style pump, so we couldn't use it. But we've really stripped this truck so that there's nothing really of value to us that's left on that truck anymore.
So, Mike, the pump is off it, and you get that?
Not the pump itself. The pump is still on the truck, but all the valves that went to it, the air primer, the suction intake on it and stuff, we took off of there. The only thing we didn't do was physically drop that pump out of the truck, because I wouldn't have had to pay the pump company to come up and do that.
Yeah, yeah. We have one bid, it's for $1,000, the Lufkin's Auto Sales. That's a tough one.
But it continues to sit there.
I know, it's just sitting there.
I mean, I know psychologically, but we need to move it.
What if we sold it as scrap?
That's basically what you're getting.
By the pilot, is that what it is?
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, which company was it, the dinner?
Lufkin.
Lufkin Auto Sales.
Yeah, and my, my, again, this is my assumptions, I believe they're, they're going to take that truck to scrap it, is what my belief is going to be with that. But I don't know what the cost would be to bring it to a scrapyard that'll pay for the aluminum on the truck. That, I don't know what the value would be or anything like that.
How do you know that he didn't bid on the thing on when all the equipment was on there?
Because it wasn't, we didn't put it out for bid until after we had stripped the truck. We sat on it for quite some time, and thought we should put it in the paper a couple of weeks ago.
I make a motion, we accept the $1,000.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? All right. 2-0? Yeah.
Just seems like--
Yes.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is also a request for ARPA federal funds. You recall, back in September, you all accepted $307,264.11 under the American Rescue Plan Act, which is what ARPA stands for. At that time, you all encumbered $127,037.96, and that was to cover welfare from March through August, and an additional $10,000 for the recovery warrant policing model article, and then another $20,000 to be used in 2022. So today, I'm asking for your authorization for the town to reimburse itself an additional $26,046.71, which is the cost of the welfare miscellaneous assistance line item from September through December 31st.
Make a motion to approve?
And I'll second that.
And I have a question here, and maybe you can't answer it because Seal's not here. Each of the months that are listed here, $34,729, $35,511, this is for miscellaneous motels, $37,823, $27,340, so you have three issues here. You have the number of people, you have the length of stay, and you have the, you know, the billing cost for the room. So I guess the question I would have, and it's primarily academic, I guess, is just, you know, what drives this? Is it, is it the number of people?
Yeah, there's a couple of things there. One, it is the number. Something else has happened from September on, which has helped us, that Tri-County cap, we've been able to divert a significant number of people to go through them, because they also got ARPA funds specifically for that. So we've had to deal with a few significantly less clientele for the last couple of months. So if it hadn't been for Tri-County with their ARPA money, we'd probably be following the same, the same trend.
Yeah, when it came to $207,000, almost $208,000.
Yeah, yeah. And on my report, it would have left us $123,739.74, but I just subtracted the ventilators for the ambulance, so out of that, $307,264.11, right now, we have a current balance of $89,583.91 left out of that first batch of ARPA funds. So at some point, we'll come back for you with some other items on how we're able to use that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Who's screening these papers?
They, they go through the standard welfare process as an application. They're required to dial 211 before they could even deal with us, and so there is a state form, and we go through that process.
Who's? Didn't answer my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Seal.
Seal.
And Vicki is the backup, yes. Sorry, sir.
Okay, so the next item is Parks and Rec for adding the Riverfront Commons as a parking recreational facility.
Yep, so now that we have really gone through the final procedures of purchasing that Riverfront Commons area, just adding it as an official reservation section within the High Rec Facility Reservation, so it would be open as a, a town Parks and Rec facility, so that events and programs can be scheduled over there.
Caitlin, I have a question regarding the, the board of, the Park and Recreation Board of Directors. They're elected. Do they have to approve this as well, or? I was, I have a jurisdictional question in terms of whether or not we can actually do it. I think it's a good idea, but I'm not sure, given that we're dealing with another body that, that's elected. Do they have to also approve it?
I'm, well, I would ask that she present that, but since the town is the one that purchased it, it's town funds, that's why it's coming to you all is the permission to put it on, because it wasn't purchased directly through the revolving fund with the parks.
Yeah, but we're asking to put a parcel on that's under a different board. I mean, we're asking for a designation that's under the jurisdiction of another board. And it would only, you know, I think this is a good idea, but I'm just wondering whether or not we can--
Yeah, and I can bring that back to them for prue and come back.
Yeah, that would be good, thank you.
Okay, motion to table?
Yeah, motion to--
I got a question regarding that.
Okay, so Roger table, Milk second?
Yeah.
Is she aware of the letter that was presented by the Conservation Committee? As to what you can use it for?
I am not.
You need to be told what it is, because that was part of the, the, this letter was dated March 25th of 1990, had a thing on it, and it said in here, they didn't say not to buy it. They did say the fact that you cannot use it for packing electrical, you can't use it for certain things out in there. And that was, it had to be only left as a green area pertaining to it. And that letter was on file. It was also, never mind on file, it was presented to the town by Roger Merrill, who read in front of the town manager at the time, had a thing on it, and it was actually read to the town, had a thing on it that said what they did. And I think that has an effect on what you can use it for, as far as that matters. Excuse me.
Bruce, remember, in, I don't have it with me, but I think their motion, and you're exactly right, that's what they said, but their approval of supporting this was contingent upon the land being handled in a different way. It was, it was, it was a contingent approval. If, if you keep the land, you know, so much open space, whatever, whatever that said, then we approve this, this request. I'm not sure it blocks, it blocks anything, it's just really asking the selectmen to honor their recommendation to keep it in a certain way. I think that's the way it was--
Yeah, this wouldn't have anything to do with development. This is strictly like for the First Fridays, when the concerts are out there. I mean, the public events that we were able to do under the lease, it's just formally putting it under the town, so that, for doing the scheduling wise. This has nothing to do with development, turning dirt, or building anything down there, it's just the use of--
But they should know about that letter and be able to read it.
Yeah, and I'll give Caitlin that tomorrow, but that letter then would come in when you go through Phase II on whatever's the next plan for that property, in the sense of what they would intend to do. But this, this is just dealing with just the use of what's been used under the two-year lease. So it's not adding anything--
Well, maybe bring up that lease first. That lease in turn was no good, okay? It was poorly done. Again, it was the other town manager, had a thing on it from that time, but the lease of that property out of it, we have had experiences in Littleton with leases on property. Give me an example, the Mount Eustis here was leased to the people who had a nonprofit organization to run it, and it was, at that time, they had gone to the courts or the town, and they got a recommendation that said that you had to put that article on the warrant to be able to lease it. It was put on the warrant, as far as that went, to lease Mount Eustis out to these people. There was no lease on this property of it. They want to have, made up an arrangement on the thing on it, but they did not go to the town whatsoever on the basis of getting a vote to in turn have a lease agreement on it. It was not. Never mind that, there was no purchase and sale agreement. This is one of the biggest shams I think the Town of Littleton's ever been in, had a thing on it. And I'm not saying it against the property, I'm just saying it was poorly handled and poorly done pertaining to what it was. As far as I'm concerned, it's a sham, had a thing on it completely. I wrote a letter and said that I felt it was illegal on the basis of what they did as far as the $175,000 too, because of the letter in turn and the situations of not having any, this lease agreement was no good. There was no lease. That lease in turn, what they had, had no purchase and sale agreement to buy that property, and the fact that it was just poorly done, period, had a thing on it, to go there. I'm not even convinced that this thing has passed, had a thing on it. I brought a letter in that I got, and I gave it to the moderator that came from the courts, and a thing on it, and a court in turn said in here, it was dated, dated January 6th from the courts. And it said in that letter, that there's only certain things you can do, and you had to abide by it on the basis of the laws and rules and regulations of the state, had a thing on it. One of which is, there's a rule that said you have to have 14 days any time you have a town meeting, had a thing on it, and you have to advertise it, give the public, give it honor and dignity from that time. First thing was, when I went down to this court session, had a thing on it, suddenly they had a different date, which I didn't know anything about it, but there was a rule changed the date, and where did it come from?
The attorneys had the eight, we had the seven, and that was corrected by the court, and we have a court document that the town was authorized-- And we have a court document that the town was authorized to hold a vote on January seventh, Friday.
Who faulted it in the beginning?
The attorney.
The attorney. So are we going to pay this attorney for making this mistake?
Haven't gotten a separate bill.
It had to go to court, and they had to go to court. And the attorney, you're telling me that the attorney made the mistake? I don't want to be paying any attorneys that make mistakes on our expense of them, okay? And an attorney's only working that, they'll learn something. An attorney in turn only work one way. If you ask them a question, they're only going to bill you for the question that you asked. And then if you change the comma in there or something else on it, they'll bill you again. But consequently, if they make mistakes, we shouldn't be paying for any mistakes that occur in that property. And this letter that I brought up was because it came out of the courts, out of the thing on it, January sixth. I don't think that that in turn actually passed on a motion of it because if it's January sixth, you've got to go back, and I believe that what I got told, because it was passed to Milt Brox and the letter in turn went to the town manager, and I think you probably in turn went to the attorney, am I right?
Yes.
You didn't do what you're supposed to be doing, which was, this is a state, not the attorney, not you. You have to go back to the state of New Hampshire and you have to write the letter on the basis of what the court approved. And whatever the court comes out and says on that document as of January, January sixth, then you've got to go back and find out if that's the date they're going to use, then you have to give eleven, I mean, you have to get fourteen days notification. And if you, if the state went back and says, that's what you got to have on this, that whole term was passed, it was not legal. Because the motion was not there to do it.
Thanks for your concern, Bruce. We, you know, we sent information to our attorney and he said to keep going with it.
No, 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 I don't want that attorney. Attorney has nothing to do with it. You've got to remember, this is a state of New Hampshire, the state laws, they come back and say how you can run a meeting and what you can do. And you guys in turn have got to make sure before you go any further that the compliance with the state regulations are. As of to this date of the court coming through as of January sixth.
We did follow the regulations. The date was advertised in plenty of time. The judge knew that.
They didn't write those in the court.
Excuse me, sir. The judge knew we had a deliberate accession, we met all the deadlines. He made a decision that the town went through. There was a Scribner error on the seventh and the eighth, that was corrected. We have a signed court order of a legal election on January seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
So we followed their rules right through.
The court in turn signed this piece of paper, I don't know where it is. The court signed a letter on the thing and they dated it January sixth. And it says right in here that you've got to comply with all the state regulations out of the thing on it. So if that, if the courts come into play first, and if the court in turn is the actual document is January sixth, and the state of New Hampshire comes back and says you've got to give fourteen days, then you don't have a legal vote of going down there and doing it.
So we'll wait for the fallout.
You what?
Wait for the fallout and see if there is a problem from what we can see.
Now, you don't have a fallout, you in turn have the responsibility to find out if it is legal.
From what we're saying, which we did, it's legal. We're good.
If I tell you, I'm telling you, you didn't do it, okay? That's what I'm saying. Not based on a letter that we received back from the courts. The court in turn was dated on that, and that says right in here that you have to do it complying with all regulations of it.
Bruce, they think you're going to have to hire an attorney and file suit against us.
I don't have to hire an attorney.
We're going to stop this soon, okay? Because it can't go on this way forever. Everybody that we've talked to, including the judge and our attorneys, have felt we've done this correctly. If you think we haven't, then you have the opportunity and the right to file suit against us. This has got to end though because.
Well, I can write a letter to the, I can write a letter to the Attorney General. And the Attorney General would be brought into it and in fact, if you found out that it's illegal, then you've got a problem.
Please do that. That would satisfy you and it would certainly satisfy us in terms of coming to the, you know, end of this process.
I mean, I just got the letter the same day, out of the thing on it, basically it came in. But usually when courts in turn make decisions, those are final decisions on what there is. And that's the date of January sixth.
Thank you, Bruce.
So I'll go back to the commission.
Yes, table that, bring it back, once they get.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next on the agenda is board assessors. Nothing. Nothing on that. Public comment? Rudy?
Yes. I would like to ask you a chip, to find a chip. Wouldn't you guys going to install the ventilator inside the ambulance? If somebody needs it, the ventilator, when you go get an emergency, are you going to charge them for that?
Yeah, it's part of the base rate for the ambulance for what we call an ALS charge. So it's covered in that, in the billing that we currently have.
That's the mean, that the patient doesn't just got to pay you guys to use the ventilator inside the ambulance, the office got to pay the hospital to use the ventilator. It's at the hospital, right? That's the mean, it's going to have two bills.
They have two bills now between the ambulance and the hospital. Our bill.
I'm talking about the ventilator, only the ventilator.
The ventilator itself will not create an additional charge to a patient.
No charge at all.
Correct. It's built in so that the fees we pay now, it's the same. This is just an added treatment that we can give to the patients.
That's good. It's good for the people to know, you know, that even if they have the ventilator inside the ambulance, and they needed them, you know, the ventilator, the bill isn't going to be, you know, because the ventilator is very expensive, you know that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, I feel that. Thank you. I have another question. Do you think you guys probably, you know, can change the rules about, I went to another town, okay? They bid some, I don't know if it was a police car or it was a member of stuff like that. And they did the bid inside the meeting, no layers like you guys doing. Do you think by any chance, you know, with two thousand two, twenty-two, do you think you guys can change, maybe bring the people in, if they, you know, on whatever the, you know, whatever the town sells?
Like the fire truck.
Yeah, like the fire truck. Do you think it's better for, you know, for us, for the citizens, you know, or you think it's, you know?
So that was put in the newspaper and advertised heavily. You could have bid on it.
I understand that. I'm talking about instead of putting, okay, you put them in the newspaper, but also you put them in the agenda that people can bid for anything, so like police cars or stuff like that. They got to be inside the meeting.
The bids are open at the meeting.
Yeah.
And they may, they don't see them, they don't see them until the meeting.
I know, but you already got a bidding for somebody from outside.
Right, and he opened it here at the meeting.
And that had to be in by a certain date, sent in to us.
So the decision is made at the meeting.
And open them.
And because it happened here.
I got this gentleman that made the one thousand dollar bidding, you know, here.
This is a public document now because it's part of this meeting.
That's the mean, I can bid more this day, I can bid, I can bid one thousand, one, one dollar.
Not now, the deadline's gone. If you bid that, that's why you don't do it and see somebody's bid and then somebody bids more. That's not a sealed bid. That's not, that's an unfair way of trying to dispose of the equipment. It's, yeah, it's a sealed bid, we don't see it.
A bid?
It's a good idea from a business standpoint, but it's not legal.
Oh, it's, oh, it's illegal to do a meeting?
Well, if we open up, let's say we have three bids.
Yeah.
And then you put in the fourth one here.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't work under the law. You'd have to submit a bid in writing like the others have.
They don't have to be.
This particular person is in Whitefields or this company's. Well, he would be within distance, but sometimes we get bids in from Concord and, you know, from places, businesses down.
I accept what you say, you know. And one more, another two minutes, okay? I don't understand one thing, I mean, you know, you guys, I mean, as a part of my concern, you know, some of you guys that are making this town, are pretty smart. No smarting with the capital S, but smart. Don't you think, really, I'm serious, that we have three thousand, a six hundred registered voters? I don't understand, you know, three thousand, six hundred registered voters. And a special election, you got hundred and forty-eight people come to vote. I don't know whose fault is that. I don't want to say nothing, stop later. But do you think, as a servant, as the officer of the town, don't you think that's disgusting? You got hundred and forty-eight people of three thousand, six hundred registered voters that they come to vote for a special election. Something went wrong. I don't know what even wrong, but something went wrong. And you, Mr. Brats, you know, you know about this thing more than anybody else because you've been around with it.
There was only one question, and that probably a lot of people just didn't respond to it. But when we had, and Bruce maybe has this information because he follows it as well and others do here in the room. For a presidential election, we get about two thousand people of the thirty-six hundred. We never get the thirty-six hundred or the thirty-three hundreds. But I think a one-question election is, or, you know, yeah, a one-question election is really difficult if most people don't identify either with it or against it. And then, of course, it was snowing, so I, but could it have been advertised more? It couldn't by the town because we can't use money that looks like we're favoring one side or the other. So I think that the placements were put in the papers, other people would have.
I never saw any placements in the paper.
Well, they were in the paper. We had to post in the paper and post them.
It was in the paper twice, it's been on the website, and I've posted it at several locations around town.
It's required, it should be. Required to do this first thing.
Yeah, and we did those. We did those.
No, my question to the officer of the town is, do you think that's normal? Three thousand, six hundred registered voters and just hundred and forty-eight to show up? Come on, let's be honest. Let's be honest.
Well, a one-person, a one-question election is kind of abnormal anyway. And we had to follow the rules as if we had a hundred questions, but we only had that one question. So part of it is very strange and I agree with you, it's unique. And that may be why we didn't get very many people as well.
I go the other way on it, Rudy, a little bit. The fact is that this town in turn has got a serious problem with school. And here we are going over here and spending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's on the limit, because it came in, it said this project will be costing one million and a quarter over here to do this. And here we got a problem with school, here we got a problem with the septic system out of it down here, as far as that part. And here we are, and the people in this community, either they're the most liberal people in the world or they just don't have any common sense when it comes down to where you put your dollars to be able to move forward with it. I mean, we just should not be doing something of this nature, I don't believe. But everybody has their own thing that they want to do, okay? And if it goes through, then you're going to live with it from the point of what it is. But my, my gluttons, I just, I mean, I just have a hell of a problem with what is dealing with out of it or it's not being proposed right on the basis of the people that are bringing up here saying what the costs are and dealing with it. Just very, very costly to be involved with what you've got. I mean, here you go to school, you've got a major problem. And then you've got, you've got the same thing down at that sewer plant, out of the thing on it. It's just unbelievable what that's going to cost to repair it again.
Mr. Hadlock, the problem with the sewer though, you can't mix that.
Well, it's only because it's.
That's never run by general funds, so there's no taxes, yeah, so anything that is used.
But that's not how it works.
Well, it is.
We've had, it is there and you pass it from the point of what it is, we use a fee basis. But we had to put a roof on that thing, it was paid for by the taxpayer. We had to start it when it was done by the taxpayer. So consequently, these things are in here from that part. And then you have put it in that the user fee in turn comes back. Now, I think we've only got a million dollars roughly in that pond. And we've already exhausted it on these two pumps, out of the thing on it. Never mind what you got to do down there. It's just, it was poorly taken care of as far as the managing of it over the years.
That's what we're trying to fix.
That's exactly right, but it shouldn't be done that way. I brought it to the attention of the town, I think it was about a year or two ago, on the thing on it. I don't know what you, what, I went down there and looked at it, it was just terrible.
I'd like to go back for a second. There's another side to this, Rudy. There were at least seven of us that spent thirteen hours apiece there with a hundred and twenty-eight votes. So there's frustration all around that there weren't more people there. But in point of fact, that's, that's what happened. But I think the fact that it was only one question and only a certain number of people were interested in that question, that's why we didn't have as many, and we probably lost them because of the weather as well.
Yeah, also.
But you people still okayed it in the beginning. You started by okaying it from the selectmen in here. And the selectmen started okaying these things and doing it without looking into it. And you guys are doing a terrible job. That's the ultimate. You can't be putting it on to somebody else. The selectmen had to approve his minutes and had to approve the purchase and they had to approve the lease and they had to approve this meeting down here too. So you guys are pushing the button the wrong way when you turn around and do that. You people are the responsible people that are doing this and you shouldn't be doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Excuse me, excuse me, that's Mr. Brat. I'll respond I am because you give me, you know, a good, I mean, you know, just I got to think about a little bit, but I want to tell you a thing. After the election, I mean, if you, everybody knows, I'm on Facebook, at least twenty hours a day, okay? At least, because I'm asleep a lot. Go on my site, Rudy Jones, it's very easy. Almost the same thing, about probably hundred posts and people responded to me. But the post that I sent, I may, I tell you that because I'm very honest about, that I put on a post that whatever they read inside the election boards of the day, it was not the truth because they never put the one-point-four million dollars that would have cost to finish the project, okay? Lot of people answered me, and believe me, I'm not, I'm not lying. They are like, Rudy, we don't know about this one-point-four million dollars that you're talking about. I said, okay, go to the town, they talk to you. I said, go see the town manager. That guy says, so honest, he tells you everything from A to Z. But just to say, maybe if people, I'm just to say maybe, people, they were already, you know, they won our votes the way it's supposed to be written, maybe they know what I have. Hundred and nine votes plus, yes, and twenty-nine, no. It would have been different, you know what I'm talking about? But it's, I know you guys did the best you can to do whether it was allowed and stuff like that. My main concern is this, that probably you guys should work a little bit harder to make it people a little time know what's really is going on and be more transparent with people and stuff like that. Because over three thousand, six hundred registered voters, you got one, twenty-eight, that's it.
I'll compliment you.
Thank you very much.
I'll compliment you as well, Rudy, because you were there at least seven hours, usually standing outside.
Because I care about the town, you know, because, you know, it's just, but thank you for everything that you probably, you know, just if you guys could change things in town, do it.
Any more public comment?
No.
I got one. I believe that you people should be doing some changes as to how you operate. Can you shut him up for a minute so I can tell you? Did you, the board in turn makes an article out that says we've got places on the budget committee, we've got places on the river district, we've got places on the different places out of it. it. And then you nominate and put people on there to serve on these committees. At that point, what you should be doing is you should be putting it on there to make the nomination and then it should be put on the ballot out of the thing on it so the people are voting in, same with the fire commission or anyone. They should be put on the ballot to vote them in on a voting basis and seeing if they've all voted in, which 99% of the time they would be voted in as far as that part. But you don't have an approved budget committee. And this would do the same thing. It would, you put it in, you put the people in, they vote and then you go back the way it used to be on it. You in turn bring the people in and they have to turn around and get sworn in. Now, Steve Kelly told me he got sworn in. Tom Alt says he got sworn in. You're not swearing anybody in. Now, the only place you swear somebody in, the way you're dealing with it, is the fact of with the water and life department, the water and life department. If you make a nomination and you put somebody on there, they will not, they have got certain rules and regulations. You can't have two Republicans and three Democrats or whatever, they got rules and regulations on that. But consequently, then they can't come to a meeting unless they come up here and get someone in. So you already have the way that you're dealing with it and that should be done with every department that's in here.
Bruce, I pursued exactly that question some years ago and I got two answers. Number one, there has to be an RSA, we'll talk just about the budget committee. There's a separate RSA for an elected budget committee. And people can't get elected in unless there's an RSA that's, that designates that committee.
I think you're wrong.
Well, I, I pursued it and I, and I, I was told that you need to have a state law that, that rests on, you know, that you point to, which again swears you in. I, I, I agree with you that these should be elected.
You people have got a budget committee that's voting on these things and you're putting it in the town warrants out of the thing on every time. And they can't get me powered.
I think they can't be sworn in unless there's an RSA that the legislature has approved. And that's why the budget, I would prefer to have, I would prefer to have.
That's what I'm asking you people to do is to get all of them here and sworn in.
Here's what you do. You put a petition on the warrant.
I don't need to do that.
Yes, you do. In order to have an elected budget committee, you have to put it on the warrant and the town has to approve it.
I'm not asking for just the budget committee, I'm asking for all committees, whether it's the river district, whether it's the parks department or any of those.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think you have to, in order to, to put them on and have them swear allegiance, there has to be a state law that it rests on. There may be a general law that you can point to for these other committees, but I don't know what, which one that is. I don't necessarily disagree with your, with your recommendation, but I don't believe you can do that unless it's approved by the, by the board.
Then you should prove it to me that you can.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
You, you people should prove it to me that you can.
Well, I can tell you with the budget committee, we pursued that and that was a decision.
I didn't ask for that. I said, you prove it to me on what I'm asking for, to prove it to me that you cannot do it.
Second issue here, and you may know this because you were born and raised here, I've only been here 47 years. People don't like to have to run for office. Those of us who do.
We didn't say run for office.
No, no, no.
You were nominated.
But when you get sworn in and you've been elected, then you've run for office by definition. And, and, and our concern with that is that there's not enough people around that are willing to go through, you know, the public part of that and the costs that are involved.
Litigation wise, it tells you the fact that you have really no power on anything on it if you're nothing but an advisory board. Whether you're an advisory board for the, for the, the other one that you just mentioned, I can't remember.
Oh, the budget.
Budget committee. That's an advisory board. But the other one that you got is river district is an advisory board. Basically, the back commission is an advisory board. Back commission was never run like that before. We had a problem, he is, the town manager wanted to take it over to enhance his ability from the point of what it was. It was ran perfect when we ran this thing before and they voted in people and they ran for the specific jobs of what they did from that.
Library board is, is an elected board and, and there's an RSA that, that supports that election.
That is a separate complete thing, library, right?
Right, but what you're suggesting is that all these other committees should be, be like that.
Amen? That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I, I, I just, no, as far as budget is concerned, you can't do it. I mean, you have to go to them with voters and ask for them to create that elected budget committee.
I didn't, you keep going back to budget, I'm talking about.
Oh, I understand.
Other committees, all committees in the same way. It doesn't mean you guys in turn wouldn't put somebody on the votes out of the thing on. You put them on as far as that part, as a get, who's running for it or you advertise it and say, put it in and you people vote on it, you put it in and then there's problems for other people at the town meeting out of the thing on to do it as far as the suggestions is concerned. And they do it for two years, three years, different things, depending what they're on it.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess, any other comments?
Do we have a reason to go into non-public?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Make a, I move, we adjourn.
All right, a second. All right.